So in the September meeting, the Troy Planning Board will come to order. And will you stand, please? And Member Dickinson, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll call the roll. Member Scully.
Here.
Member Dickinson.
Here.
Member Shu Fal.
Here.
Member York.
Here.
Member Kyo, present. All present and accounted for. So first item on the agenda tonight is adoption of the minutes from the previous meeting. Is, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion with respect to the minutes?
Make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes of the August 19th, 2015, 2025.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries unanimous. We had a request from the applicant to extend the review period for PLPC 2025 0040, 1819 Fifth Avenue. Is there any discussion on that? Require a motion? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we extend the period for the... What was the address?
1819.
Review, review period?
18, for 1819 Fifth, and extend the review period.
Thank you. Is there a limit on the extension? Limit on the extension or?
Until the applicant's ready.
Until the applicant's ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So did we have a second? Yes, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion, uh, motion carries unanimous. Next order of business is election of Vice Chairman for the Planning Board in the event that the chairman is unable to be here. So is there a motion, a nomination for the position of Vice Chair of the Planning Board?
I nominate Tony Dickinson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, is there, are there any other nominations for the position? If not, the chair will entertain a motion that Secretary cast one ballot for the election of Tony Dickinson as Vice Chair of the Planning Board. To move?
Do we even need a motion on top of it? I've moved that Tony Dickinson be nominated for the Vice Chair.
Well, we can't, there's only one, so we could have a, we could cast one ballot, but let's just take the vote. So only one nominee, so all in favor of Tony Dixon for Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations, Tony.
Thank you, thank you.
Look forward to working with you further. Thank you.
Or not.
Thank you. So the first item of business on the agenda, all businesses, PLB, PLPB 2025 0029, 1011 Second Avenue. Applicant present? Representative? Yes. Aye.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. With the Environmental Design Partnership, representing Starlight Development, they're advocating for a plan development, Plan Development District on this parcel, 1011 Second Avenue in Troy. At the last meeting, this board did declare itself the lead agency for this application. And since that time, we have resubmitted a significant amount of information that was requested by the board and city staff.
Can you hold your straight? Can you folks hear him back there? So, so maybe if you, I don't know if we can control the volume, but I can hardly hear some, if you can speak up maybe?
I will try. I'm usually a pretty loud speaker. I wanted to read the list of everything that's been submitted to the board. We submitted revised site plans. We submitted a revised complete streets form. We submitted a revised dated environmental assessment form. We submitted a full written response to all staff comments issued in August. We res, uh, we submitted FEMA flood maps. We submitted a stormwater pollution prevention plan. We submitted a urban runoff control plan. We submitted a traffic demand management plan. We submitted the original traffic study, which covered 60 more units than we are currently proposing. We submitted an expanded environmental assessment form, part two, went through part two of the environmental assessment form and provided pertinent information to the study and why we believe that this project should be issued a NEG deck. We submitted a draft of the proposed PDD coordinates, which if voted on would become law for this site, zoning regulations and law for this site. We submitted letters from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, Archaeological Avoidance Plan, a data retrieval plan, and two sign-off letters from the State Historic Preservation Organization related to potential visual impacts and potential impacts to the artifacts. Both of them issued their letter signing off that this project can proceed under the archaeological sensitivity that exists there. We also submitted copies of the architectural plans. And last week, I believe, all the board members had a chance to conduct a field visit at the site, walk the property with the applicant. I was there for one of those meetings to walk, walk around, look at it, identify where the buildings are, where the trails are, where the kayak launch would be, where gazebos would be, where the overlook would be. So we're simply here tonight to provide the board that update and ask if the board has any questions related to what they saw at their site visit or any of the information that was provided to the board for this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else going to present from the applicant side at this time?
At this time, no, maybe just in response to comments.
Okay, good, thank you. So board questions for the applicant?
So we haven't had the opportunity, we just got the Sir Flow information as of four days ago. So we haven't had a real opportunity to look at that. But the question I have was, there's a ravine with a permitted outflow into the Hudson River. And, you know, I don't know if I could figure out what was really going on or what's going to happen with that. I know that's a combination of street runoff as well as some overflow from residences, is that correct?
Super.
And how is this going to be tying into that? Or how is it going to affect that outflow? Is there going to be an increase or not?
You know, per the consent order that the City of Troy is under, we cannot increase the discharge to that point from this site. So we would not be tying into that. We are doing some minor modifications and improvements to help control some of the erosions on the bank, extend a pipe to help protect the water main that runs underneath this ditch that's conveying the sewer overflow. But we will not be contributing additional flow to that overflow. We cannot and will not. And we just got the report about three hours ago, so you have about four more days than we did to review it.
Thank you.
The transportation study that you said we have, is that the one from Creighton Manning on July 2025?
That would be the traffic demand management plan, yes.
And that was to you, July 28, 2025, from Creighton Manning?
Say that again?
It's from Creighton Manning.
Correct.
Okay. So I've noticed that there's discrepancies on the third page about onsite sparking, parking space. They do not have accurate figures there. When I looked at your site plans, you have 50 underground spaces in building A and 53 in building B. They're showing 60 and 80. They're also showing 172 parking spaces. I thought with whatever EVs you have to put in, it only came to a total of underground and above ground, 265. So that, I don't think they had EVs included in that, they just had your nine ADAs.
EV parking is not going to change the parking count, they're still considered parking spaces.
Right.
So that will not change it. The traffic demand management plan also identifies that they believe we were overparked. And as a result of that, we were able to reduce the amount of parking on the site to be consistent with what the study has. And that was what you're seeing as a result in the reduction in parking in the parking garages.
Okay, so the 17 will be taking off of your total count for above-ground parking?
17.
Well, they're suggesting 17 EVs.
Why would they be taken off? They are still parking spaces.
No, what I'm saying is there's still parking spaces, but when I count 145, I was adding the 17 on because it wasn't there originally. I'm not taking it away from.
It's part, it's part of the total. So we had 260, 200, well, we ended up, we ended up with 264 total parking spaces on-site with the reductions.
Right.
Resulting from the parking garage.
I was short one. I had 265. So I noticed that you were putting 10 of them. Did I look correctly at your newest site plan? They're going to be in the kayak term?
For the EV stations? I would have to just verify that.
And then it didn't say where the other seven? I think they were going in.
Definitely not in parking grounds.
No, 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 I know that, I know that.
So the kayak parking is parallel spaces that are on the turnaround. Those 10 spaces are resident parking for the building, not for the kayak. But they are in that vicinity, yes.
Okay, so the fire trucks won't have any problems going around that?
They will not.
Okay.
They will not, we've provided turning radius plans. We've got rid of, there was an island in the middle of grass. We've got rid of the, I, rid of, rid of the island and put stamped asphalt there that they can drive over. So that we have some aesthetic feel to this large area of asphalt.
Okay, so you're saying there's 10 kayak parking in that turnaround?
There is.
I counted eight, but that doesn't mean that's.
Six parallel parking spaces for the kayak.
All right, and then 10 will be along the end of the building?
Correct.
In that space.
And then there are seven additional spaces in our building A.
Okay. And I noticed that you have 60 bike, short-term bike parking. I believe Creighton Manning suggested 63.
We can increase that.
Okay, and then
Need that demand.
You have a couple of spaces under your building where you're going to have long-term bike parking? And it is suggested that you have 70 of those? Are those two spaces big enough for 70 bikes to be locked up?
Yes, they will be.
They will be. It looks kind of small, but you know.
We can verify that, but they are, they're not going to be independent lockers for the bikes. They are going to be a room for bike storage and you will still be locking your bike in that storage room.
So you maybe have like outside where you have, where you can put your wheel, that you could lock it in, something like that?
Right, they covered long-term bike parking.
Does anybody else have questions? Because I have questions on the architect.
I, I have one. And maybe you guys did submit this information, I haven't seen it. But was there a light impact study or lighting impact study done? I'm just curious.
One of two and two are two, they should be attached to these last two pages of drawing set. That is a candle analysis on-site showing that we are not spilling light off of the property. All lights are dark sky compliant lighting.
Town lights.
Are there, are there timers or motion sensors or dimmers or anything on, on any of this lighting?
I don't believe their motion sensor, I think they are on, but they are going to be light sensitive. So they will be, they will have photometric cells to identify when the lights go down, they turn on. Many of the LED pictures nowadays have auto dimming.
I've, okay, let's talk about, again, you may have, this may be in the report, but since we didn't have a lot of time to look at this, um, let's talk about the building itself and are we incorporating green roofs, energy efficient systems, anything?
So the building itself would be an Energy Star compliant building under New York State Building Code. There are rooftop terraces associated on the buildings, but there are no green roofs.
Jeff, you're done?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I don't, I, yeah, go, go, I'll come back.
Yeah. Okay, I'm looking at your plans for your apartments. And I've noticed that in the basement, you have six above-ground apartments, three of them with balconies, three of them with studios. So will that constitute a fifth floor? Because that means that some of your underground parking is above ground, not below ground?
So what we have, it's easier to see on our site. On our building, we're talking the T-shaped building.
Yes.
So the parking garage was essentially the first floor of the building, the basement level of the building. We find as we have the projection that extends north towards the river and we're working with the grading in that area to preserve as much of the mature vegetation as physically possible, that we do end up exposing that garage or basement area on that first floor, which would extend it which extends it out towards the river. So we have now grading come down to the garage is underground, the grading tapers down for that first appendage that, 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 that cord that's sticking out. And we have ground level units in that location. What we have done is there are, there are only three stories on that portion of the building. We have the six units in the garage and then we extend it up with three more stories of residential. And then there is a outdoor terrace, outdoor rooftop terrace associated with that end of the building.
Okay, so these are incorrect because they all show four stories for apartments.
That detail.
You have on building A, first floor, second and third floor are the same apartment sizes and fourth floor.
If you look at the fourth floor right here, we identify it as a rooftop terrace. This is not a unit, that's a rooftop terrace.
Right.
Top of those buildings, so it is four stories facing the river.
So your basement isn't, your basement apartments isn't going to be considered basement level that's going to be exposed? So that's still not going to make it five floors? I'm confused.
So we have the basement level, it has six units in the basement level.
Right.
Above that, those basement level units, there are only three additional stories of units. To get to the additional units, we stepped them back and now they are four stories for the parking garage.
So I guess I, you know. So we're talking about basement. You're excavating how deep for this basement or it?
It varies all over.
Is it garden level? Are we saying it's a half basement?
It is an exposed walkout at this end of the building. It is exposed and we have a retaining wall running around the building in this location. So this puts the basement level underground. This degree drops out around it and this is exposed in this area. This is not exposed under the remainder of the building.
So is your question that that far end creates a building of five stories instead of four?
First floor, second floor, third floor, fourth floor, and that's the basement.
And this part is.
And that is above ground because it's, it's got balconies on it. How is that not?
I see what you're saying.
Were you calling it the basement floor, but it's above ground?
Not all of it.
The basement, other than this portion of the building.
I know, but that.
Is below grade, or is below grade. This portion of the building.
Is that great?
Is that great?
So how many floors are above that unit?
Three. It's got the rooftop terrace. This is all four-story. Over the garage, this does not have units. So that's our rooftop terrace. It is all one building, again. So this is what, yeah, this part.
So the, the rest of that unit has another floor above the rooftop terrace, right?
No. Rooftop terrace is the roof.
Is it the high, that the highest point of the building?
That's the highest point from the adjacent grade.
Now, is it the highest point on the building?
Highest point on the building would be would be back here, but this is only.
If you get on the top floor, the lowest point of this building, how many floors down is it?
It is four stories of residential over the parking garage.
And the parking garage is all underground?
Yes.
Is it all one building?
It is all one building.
The two buildings, all one building, yeah.
Okay, so part of the building has basement apartments.
Correct.
Which are at grade.
Which are at grade.
At grade. And then directly over that, there are three floors.
Correct, yeah.
But the building itself tops out at four floors above those apartments, though it's not directly above those apartments, correct?
Okay, correct.
So how do you have one, two, three, this is under?
I don't know.
Six apartments.
So are you planning any step back on the top level? Is there any step back on the?
Yes, that's going to be the rooftop terrace. You're going to be able, all the residents of that community are going to be able to go out to the fourth floor.
Is that the riverside?
That's the riverside, there's a rooftop terrace facing the river, which we thought was a great amenity and promoted by the City of Troy in almost every project.
And how, how deep is the terrace? More than 10 feet?
60, 60 feet? 60 feet?
Yeah.
So to have, I'm asking our engineer, Chris?
Yeah.
If they were they're building on the river, there's supposed to be a 10-foot setback on anything from the fourth floor up. So does that mean how far back from the river do they have to be in order for them to not have that 10-foot setback on top of the building? Because they're only showing it on the T-section, which is the section that's going to be closest to the river where they have this fourth floor terrace. So is any other part of this building or the other building have to have a 10-foot setback on their fourth floor?
That is a zoning question that we are looking into and we will discuss further with the applicant. I mean, we, we, I don't have a definitive answer for you right now.
Okay, so if, if they get a if they get a PDD and they don't go to zoning first, does that, does that automatically give them whatever they want to do without having that 10-foot setback?
So this is a waterfront overlay requirement? And if it is applicable, and I'm not saying it is or isn't, it probably would require a zoning variance.
Okay, so even if they got a PDD, they would still have to have that 10-foot setback if it's applicable?
So it would probably require, if they don't have the 10-foot step back, if it is applicable, it probably would require a zoning variance at some point.
It's our position that based on the legislation, how it's written for the PDD, the PDD legislation that gets enacted by the, the city council essentially overrides that. The city council will create the bulk dimensional requirements for the project.
All right, so that's, that's up for debate, but that's your position.
Talking about the PDD, you're supposed to provide us with the development intensity guideline within the code of the PDD. Can you explain that to me, what this means? You don't know?
I'm not sure what the
Okay.
Intensity is, my understanding is that it provides all the dimensional and bulk requirements, which are the legislation for this project. So if the intensity is identified, the number of units divided by.
So you have 11 acres, is that correct? So how much of the property is in the City of Troy?
Probably around 11 and a half.
11 and a half acres?
Not in the City of Troy, you've got one acre in Sketico, correct?
I don't think it's quite an acre, but I can see if I can define, I don't know that we have it next.
Have you looked at the city code?
We have 10 acres, 10 acres and city.
10 acres. And you have 175 units?
Correct.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, 17 and a half per acre? How does that apply to the plant, the PDD under code 285-57? And there, isn't there a density issue here for a PDD? How many residential units can you have per acre under a PDD?
I don't know.
In the new code, I don't think there is a limitation. I believe that might be from the old.
You could get back to us on that?
Yeah, I, I think you're referring to the old code that was overwritten in 2023.
Okay.
Um, I'll definitely check, was this citation again?
So 285-57?
So that was the city code for planned developments. I don't know if they've gotten rid of that.
If there's a change, let us know.
So there's, well, I'll, I'll talk to you afterwards about that. Okay.
Yeah, we, we'll look at it, city code. It's got to be quoted in the right section of code.
Right, right. And that's what I'm thinking this might be, because.
Yeah, if, if that came from E codes, that's the old one.
Okay.
I'll go with one. I knew your original submission said there'd be no excavation now, you're acknowledging there will be excavation, is that correct?
Our original, our original suspicion, there was a misunderstanding in environmental assessment. There was a misunderstanding in the environmental assessment form. We thought it only pertained to commercial and light industrial projects, we said not applicable. However, there's always a grading plan and we've always represented. However, there's always a grading plan and we've always represented there is excavation and removal of material from the property.
Yeah, so do you, um, you know the volume of that? Material that'll be excavated?
Had that number at the last meeting, I think this question was asked.
Thirty-seven thousand cubic yards.
In that range, thirty, thirty-five, thirty-seven. And so where is that going to go?
It's going to go to a quarry site that it'd be appropriate permitting from the D E C to accept these spoils of earth.
Do you have to get permit from the D E C to do it also?
The quarry itself has the permit, so they can openly take fill from this site, place that this.
And where is that quarry?
So un- under the mine land reclamation use law, um, there's what's commonly referred to as mining and aid of construction. Which is an exemption. Um, so typically, under the, the mining law, you take seven hundred and fifty cubic yards or a thousand tons in a year. You have to apply for a mining permit. However, if you are excavating this material pursuant to an approved site plan. Um, for something like this, yeah, you are exempt from the mining law. So you don't need a mining permit. I, I believe that's where the question is going. Um, if not, sorry for the tangent.
What procedures do you plan on using to remove the shale material? It's mostly rock.
It's currently proposed for ripping and excavation. Escavators with a ripper, maybe a hammer on an excavator.
No blasting.
We are not proposing blasting, no.
Any use of hammer drills?
I'd have to ask. I don't know the answer to that.
We should know that. We should know the answer to that next time.
Sure.
What happens, uh, you don't foresee that the possibility you're not going to be able to accomplish this without blasting?
It, not my understanding.
Yeah, our, our understanding is we've talked, the excavator that did a significant amount of earth moving associated with the Hannaford Plaza. That was all ripple, ripple shale. No blasting was required to excavate and develop the Hannaford Plaza.
Uh, another sort of a cultural and historical question along those lines. So, uh, let's say. Uh, in this process of, of removing materials, uh, you discover any, uh. Materials that, um, might be significant, uh. You know, to, to people that are. Sort of opposed to this project. What, what's your plan for preservation or, or, or interpretation of, of the materials? What are you going to do with them?
So as part of our data, part of our data retrieval plan, um, that's been approved by New York State and the Office of Historic Preservation. There will be archaeologists on site during the excavation. Uh, recording what is found within the work areas and taking those findings and putting in them. In the appropriate repository, uh, for any artifacts that are encountered.
I know this might be redundant. I, I don't remember, but just, uh, was there an, an independent archaeological review done? On the site for indigenous or historic, uh.
Yes.
Materials?
I would like to say the answer to that is yes. Harken Archaeology did a study. That was then submitted to the New York State Office of Art Recreation and Historic Preservation. Who reviewed it in collaboration with the tribal nations. And other agencies of the state to ultimately issue the two letters that you have in front of you that identify no, no impact.
So the gentleman that was here from Harken last month, did he say that he was going to be doing a little bit more digging at this site? Before you start or is that completely done? There's going to.
Yeah, that's part of the phase three, uh, data retrieval. So the archaeologists will go out there and they will do the, the. Recovery of anything that's significant of value. Um, and then I think you asked a question about repository. I think you were absent the meeting. We talked about that. Um, so, uh, there's a couple of ways to do it. Um, we've offered to give it to, um, if the, if the Stockbridge Muncie wanted, we offered to give it to them. Um, if not, we offer to give it to the state museum. Um, typically goes to the state museum, so. Whoever has preference.
Was that communicated to the Stockbridge Muncie folks?
Yes, and based on conversations with our archaeologist, um, he said that they may not have. Um, space in their repository for an entire curation, so, um, I don't think it's clear as to where it's going yet. But it'll either be state museum or to the Stockbridge.
Or it will be the what?
State museum or the Stockbridge Muncie.
Do the Stockbridge in, um, have place for it or a way to accommodate it?
It's, it's my understanding they, they have space, um, but from our discussions with our archaeologists. Um, it's not clear if they, how much space they have or how much they, they want to take. Um, but obviously our first, you know, I guess we could call it something like a first of, uh, first right of refusal would go to the Stockbridge Muncie.
So and if, if neither of the Stockbridge Muncies or the state wants it, what do we do? Throw it out?
No, no. Um, that is a just in question, which I'll have to get an answer to, but I'm sure there's other repositories that we would ask. I don't know that the state museum has ever said no, um, not that I've ever heard of, but I'll, I'll give you an answer for that.
But you said they indicated they might not have space for it, right?
That was, that was the Stockbridge.
Okay, I got you. My question, I think that was Jeff's question about the repository. My question was about the depository. Where, where is that quarry that the stuff will be transferred to?
I, I think it's going to depend at the time as who has the biggest need. Um, you know, construction could be a couple of years down the road. So I, I don't know that we can identify it now or that we would want to say it's going to go to, you know, facility X when. In two years from now, it might go to facility Y because X doesn't have the need.
Well, it might have relevance for construction traffic, for instance, so I think.
Sure.
We help, we, at least if we could know the options.
We can identify some places where it might go.
Yeah.
Want to tell us about the protective measures that you have in place for the sensitive, uh, artifacts, sensitive areas? Kind of like during construction, you got to test out sensitive areas, uh, the northern locust tree and western locus four. Mark the zones as environmentally sensitive areas, no access to preserve that, to preserve those areas. And then we post, uh, post construction, you guys are going to put, uh, geotextile fabric over. Cover everything, remove all the, uh, lightly, all the vegetation, put down, uh, geotextile fabric. Topsoil, everything. And I think the end game is, uh. Uh, file the restrictions or reasons prohibiting future ground disturbance without shipos.
Sounds exactly what we're doing.
Restrictions re-recorded, the city and county clerks, so.
That is correct.
You've taken it, uh, you've taken it by way.
Yeah, we have, in, in order to get the sign off from the state agency, all, all that stuff has to be in place and very detailed and specifically spelled out.
Can you tell us a little bit about, uh, storm water, where the storm water is going, where the sewer is going? Uh, sanitary is going.
Certainly, so, uh, we, we just got the report today from the city in C B M Smith. Um, and there will be some mitigation measures that are necessary to deal with that C S O. An issue that the city has. Uh, right now, the sanitary sewer is connected into. The existing sanitary sewer within the streets to laterals servicing the building. The stormwater, there are some stormwater management areas on site. There'll be a, a full erosion. Erosion and sediment control plan implemented throughout the construction. And ultimately, uh, stormwater discharge, uh, to the Hudson River. This, this is a first order stream, so we are compliant. Our plan as proposed is compliant with the D E C standards for a site. Impervious area stormwater runoff at this location.
So your, your, your stormwater is going to be controlled on site. Uh, you're going to have filters, filters and, um.
Yes, there, there is, uh, onsite controls. There is, uh, filter strips, there is, uh. Um, there's a hydrodynamic separators.
Yes, like five of them.
Yes, yes. All, all these things that are set to filter the water before it is discharged.
And that's all post, uh, post-construction, you guys are.
Forever.
You're not dumping any stormwater into the.
Correct.
So there'll be no sewer overflow going through that?
Not associated with our project. We cannot increase the sewer overflow going to that location.
Okay, you did say when we did our site visit that you were going to extend that pipe further into the culvert to, uh. Did you not?
Yeah, so what, what's happening? In the ditch, there's a sewer pipe that discharges. Below that sewer pipe is water line that runs underneath the open ditch. What we are going to do, uh, to help control the erosion, I think everyone that was out there saw all the erosion that's occurring. Over top of a significant water main that crosses the Hudson River. We are going to extend that pipe so it's not over top of the water mains. No erosion can occur over top of that water main. Further protecting the potable water supply from the overflow sewer and protect the stream banks from the erosion.
All right, and what did you tell us that extent would be about thirty feet? Did you say thirty feet?
Thought I said thirty feet. It's on the plan. I don't know.
Do you know how blurry my eyes are looking at your plans on my computer?
Like right now, it's about thirty to forty feet in front of that sewer of water main. If we get it extended at least thirty to forty, to get it over top of the water main.
So is, is that a water main and the ravine, all the, on the easement? I mean, who controls that? Is that your property? The water main is your property?
Water main is our property and there's.
So the water main is not your property?
It's not our property.
Huh? Yes, there's a, there's an easement.
Yeah, we don't own it. We own the land, we don't own the water main.
Okay.
So it's a city, city easement?
It's, it is a city easement. Uh, it actually runs also to the benefit of Waterford and Half Moon.
Can we just revisit the traffic stuff that Tony was talking about a little earlier? So, um. You did, recently did, uh, traffic demand management study, right?
Yep, that was.
And but that was based upon, partly based upon a twenty twenty-one traffic study, correct?
There, there was a twenty-one traffic study for about two hundred and thirty units. I'm sure there is some references in there to basic background information.
Well, I think they were using the, the, the data from that twenty twenty-one study too, so. And you know that at that time, there was a highway closed and it was during COVID. So those numbers probably not reliable for today's project?
We are in the process. Um, we waited until school was in session to make sure we're covering. School traffic in this area, so additional traffic counts and data is being collected at this point in time.
That go into a new T D M P?
It'll, it won't be, it'll be an updated traffic impact study, and if there are revisions required to the T D M P. Um, they will either be updated or a supplemental memo will be provided.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that decision that, that the traffic study is going to warrant a new T D M P.
Great Manning will be looking at it. If there's conflicting information that needs to change or significantly change. They will make that call.
Okay, so that, uh, the previous traffic demand management plan. Which I guess you have just updated was, uh, reviewed by a city engineer and, uh, previously and, uh. Uh, one of the critiques was that it's estimated that seventy-five percent of the, well, the first critique was that the traffic counts. Uh, may not be, uh, reliable because they were taken during the height of COVID and when horny road was closed. So some of the traffic that would normally use that second avenue was not there. So you say you're updating that. Are you, the other critique was that, uh, seventy-five percent of the site traffic will use the intersection at one hundred and twenty-sixth street. And that, um, traffic counts and analysis for this intersection should be included. Will you be doing that?
Yeah, I, I've got to look at that. I, I'm not familiar with what you're reading. This is a, a, a letter from two thousand and twenty-one for a different project.
This is, this is a letter for, from two thousand and twenty-three. It's LaBella and Associates. It is for, uh, a, a larger size project, but I mean, I think the basic idea that the. Initial traffic counts were not reliable or may not be reliable, uh, because of the particular conditions when the study was undertaken. Which I do not believe has been updated. Yeah, you say you're doing it now that school's in session. And the other, the other point that, you know, that most of the traffic would end up heading south is a fairly common sense notion. You know, and that, that will be a bottleneck intersection there at one hundred and twenty-sixth street. So will you be doing that or not? I guess to the best of your knowledge.
We'll have to talk to Great Manning if that letter from the previous project can be sent to us. Um, we will look at that, but ultimately we would submit a traffic impact study, updated traffic impact study. And that would be reviewed by the current engineer reviewing the plans. They would provide comments if required, additional traffic work would be done.
Okay, I'll, I'll provide you with a copy of this if I can before you leave today. Okay.
Your map, can you show me where your curb cut is? Is there one curb cut or is there two curb cuts?
There are two.
Okay. I see why. It looks like one's right on the curb.
Sixty feet north of our property line for the first curb cut. Second curb cut is opposite.
Directly, uh, is it, does that become a four-way intersection? It's not, it doesn't align? Now, the other curb cut is right on it. It looks like just on the other side of a, a curb in the road.
It's on the outside of the curb and that's the side of the curb you want to be to provide the best such distance available.
So did I hear, um, that you are providing sidewalks up to Hannaford or just on your property?
Up to Hannaford.
Up to Hannaford. So there's going to be sidewalks from your very northern end of your property all the way to Hannaford.
Connecting to where the sidewalk ends.
Yeah, uh, how much of this property, I think you said eleven acres, would remain, uh, undeveloped or, or landscaped? Or are we using all of it?
This is a, a pretty good figure. Uh, the darker areas are not going to be touched. Those are going to remain undeveloped with the existing trees and forest, uh, so achieved with that. In the E A F, I do not have front of me. So of the eleven acre property. The area of disturbance is seven point seven five, so two point seven five acres will not be touched. Green space. Will be seven acres and the impervious area will be a little over three acres.
When you look at your rendition of the, uh. Looking at it from the river, looking at the back of the building facing the, facing the river, it just looks like the canopy is huge. Are you going to keep? Are you keeping a lot of trees along, along the?
Yes, yeah, there's, um, everyone up on the sidewalk, there's very large trees in this area.
Yeah.
Um, it is a proposal to keep all of them that are not dead trees. If you're dying or if you're a safety hazard.
Yeah.
And create a park like setting along the river coming down. That's why we have the trail that the enters through there. Yeah, connecting over here, the terminus down to our, our kayak.
You had an opportunity to read all the staff notes on the agenda, did you, or?
We did not get a staff comment letter.
Well, it's on the agenda. Did you see that? Oh, sorry. Well, I think you should look at them, but. Number of them we've looked at, but, uh. The staff's indicating a geo- geotechnical evaluation will be necessary.
I think we had a miscommunication, me and Angie, in sending you the staff report. Apologies.
Okay, yeah.
We'll send that, we'll send that on over.
Please do.
Yeah, so it's quite a few comments on it.
Do you have a elevation from the other side of the river, Waterford?
We do. I do not have that in this presentation, but it is in the package that was submitted.
I'd like to see that.
It's in the pack that was submitted. It's in the architectural plans. Those are the, those are the elevations that. I don't have it up on on here.
How how about, as we start, if we start to build this, so let's talk about staging and heavy equipment and all of that stuff. How, where, or what is the plan for staging all of this construction and how it affects the locals?
All of the staging will occur on the site, so there can be no impact to the adjacent landowners with everything being stored on site. Exactly how a contractor is going to. Say attack this site and develop it, I don't know. I don't prescribe how they are going to attack it. That's something we're going to have to, you know, work with them on during more of the site plan aspect of this.
I guess, to follow up with that, are you guys going to, I would assume you would communicate with the locals. You know, times and things like that when the work is occurring. Because I'm I'm almost certain, driving up there, it's going to be a lot of issues with traffic and people's ability to move around. So are you planning on talking to and presenting some kind of information to notify folks when? There's heavy equipment in the in the area or potential of traffic.
The the standard process is there's a pre-construction meeting that occurs onsite or in city hall with. Various agencies within the city identifying when work is going to be commencing, how that process is going to move forward. Individually, I don't know that I've seen anyone reach out to the adjacent landowners directly from the contractor to them. Usually, and then usually, there are noise ordinances in the city. We will adhere to the noise ordinance. Construction will not be occurring outside outside of those prescribed times.
If it's something you want, I I think it would be acceptable to us if you want us to like send a notice before we undertake a certain. Stage of construction. I don't see a problem with that.
Well, I was trying to call your attention to a couple of things that the staff has told us. We should require before we can make secret determination. So I I just want to alert you to those if you haven't seen them, and one was the traffic management plan. A new one based on new traffic study and also a geotechnical evaluation and report. So those things, I think we're going to require them at some point, so you may want to get on them. Do you have objection to that? Is there a problem?
No, I think the geotech is something that we had a talk with Chris and Eric about that we haven't had a chance to yet. And understand the need, whether it's the code base, I I guess there's confusion on our end, whether it's the code-based need about steep slopes or what the concern is. But we can, excuse me, set up a call with Chris and Eric.
Yeah, work with staff on that because we'll, you know, we'll follow their guidance, I'm sure, so. If you can work it out with them, that's fine.
I'll just say one of the primary concerns would be at least an evaluation of the rock excavation and their, you know, opinion. If if it's ripable or what type of equipment should be necessary.
I think we'll also be looking at that step back provision. It's a little fuzzy to me about how many stories we actually have here. So, you know, before we conclude this, we'd probably like to make sure how many it is. So we'll look at that closer, more closely too.
Okay, great.
Did you have an opportunity? Do you see all of the the little miss comments that we get from the public prior to the meeting?
Eric typically tries to forward them to us, but I, you know, I understand Eric's out, so I don't think we've received any for this meeting. So when when anyone gets a chance, they can forward them to us and we can take a look to see.
Well, we're going to ask the public tonight for comments, and some of them probably will be the same. But I think it'd be helpful if you did look at the, they're raising, they raised questions about a rare moss, rare bat population. Tree, a lot of concerns about the trees and the variety of trees and that kind of stuff. So I think it'd be worthwhile looking at what their comments are because you'll probably want to answer your response to those things at least.
Yeah, we'll we'll make a submittal, and we understand. There's, we've done the consultations. We don't have threatened endangered species on the on the site, so we'll we'll respond.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I just have one more question. On the fourth floor of everything, you have two gray spaces. At either end of your A building and another gray space at the beginning of your T building. Are they all going to be terraces? Or they're just going to be flat?
Not sure what you're referring.
I am looking at this one right here.
Looking from the top down.
Yeah, so on the long building, those are terraces.
Because this is the only one that says terrace. These do not say terrace.
I will have to verify that with Eric.
Can you make, can you state that on the mic clear so we'll have it on the record?
I will have to verify that with the architect.
Whether or not those gray spaces are terr- in fact terraces or just rooftops.
Correct, correct.
Anybody else, any other questions?
Not tonight. I know I have a lot of questions coming up as far as the trails and stuff like that, but I think that just is going to wait for another time.
Not tonight.
Chair, I just have a clarification I'm seeking.
Pardon me?
I I would just like to ask a question regarding the. I think it's D two little, three little eyes on the FEAF. The question was. Will, I'm sorry. Will a line extension within an existing district be necessary to serve the project? You answered no. If if the answer was yes, describe extensions or capacity expansions proposed to serve this project. Just wonder why you answered no to that. What is your?
The mains on site are privately owned and operated. They are not municipal main mains being extended.
So.
They're a private, everything.
Your interpretation that that only refers to municipal line extensions?
Correct.
The other item I have is the prior PDD did have a hard hard blasting restriction. If you are getting a geotechnical, we can wait for that, but I mean, I just wondered whether the developer was still agreeable to that or not.
Again, if as long as it's, we we come back and everything says that it doesn't require it, sure.
Okay.
Have you, have you done test holes yet?
Yes, we know that it's it's shale at the surface and.
How far down?
It varies depending on where you're digging on the site. There are spots where there's a few feet of topsoil and there's spot that it's exposed.
But but how deep is the shale? How is is there? Is shale the only thing you're going to have to remove?
Again, our understanding based on from the experiences at the Hannaford, it's all ripable shit.
Okay, yeah, that's right. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Very, very helpful. So we'll open it up to public comment. Is there any member of the public who'd like to comment on this application? Yeah, come on down. So we we limit public comment to three minutes and, you know, if the person before you said everything you wanted to say. You don't need to say it again. You can if you want to, but it, I think it'd be more helpful for everybody here if you told us something new. So come on, come on down. Thank you. Yes, please. Yeah, pull it. I think you can take it right out of there if it's helpful for you or or put it to you anyways.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I have some comments. I don't necessarily need answers.
Could you, you got to identify yourself for the record, please.
Heidi Firstincel is my name.
Thank you.
And this is based on trying to read the document at environmental assessment, but it kept crashing on the computer. It's so big. So so first question is, has the, so the information may be in there, but I couldn't find it. Has the developer applied to the either the to the Corps of Engineers for either a section ten permit? Or Clean Water Act for a four permit if necessary? And if so, are the details triggering the jurisdiction described anywhere? And then second. Question is, okay, there's a kayak launch and I looked for a design of the kayak launch. I couldn't find it anywhere. And the document said, quote, no disturbance to bottom sediments will occur. But I'm thinking, how do you build a kayak launch without disturbing bottom sediments? And then I was questioning, how do you define bottom sediments? Because the jurisdiction of the Corps of Engineers is mean high water, so anything below mean high water, would that be considered a bottom sediment? So that was very confusing. I couldn't, so I looked, that's why I looked for detailed drawings of the kayak launch design, but I couldn't find that. And then page eleven, and I have written down HR. There's a checklist that says, are you working in? And I think the first one is streams, creeks. There's a little list, and there's no river. There's no option to select river. So I noticed they checked wetlands. So I was wondering why the the template document didn't have the option for them to check river? And why are they checking wetlands if there's no work occurring in wetland? So that section was confusing. And then the last thing I have is, it said, this is page. I have written down four, oh, page twenty four dot six. There's a wetland in the northeast corner, but has that been? Confirmed, the delineation of this wetland been confirmed by the state, the DEC or the Corps of Engineers? And with the buffer zone and all that stuff, and I couldn't find anything about that. And if they have confirmed that delineation, is that documentation in the document as well?
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
Good evening. Jack McGee. I sent a letter. I'm an arborist and consulting arborist and I viewed the site. I'm also a colleague of one of the other letter writers who, in his letter, finds. Has found the existence of an endangered plant on the site. So the contention of the applicant. And I'm going to quote, we don't have threatened or endangered species on the site. I would just like to know what that's based on because it seems to conflict with this expert who works for the DEC and is a professional in the field. My my expertise is in preserving trees during construction sites, among some other things. And so I'm quite aware, when I look at the map here, the darkest area in the map that was up the longest there is. I understand it was the area that will not be disturbed whatsoever. Everything else, I presume thus will be disturbed to some degree. Trying to preserve mature trees on sites that has any construction activity is. In in my field known to be kind of a fool's errand, so.
They're kind of a what?
A fool's errand, sorry. So I think i- in order to to take seriously the idea that there's going to be this beautiful intact mature forest cover along the water. That this path will go underneath, I think there needs to be a tree protection plan. Somebody with such expertise to to talk about, well, okay, what kind of, what trees are planning to be preserved? And how? That's basically it. That's that's something that people in my field do. And it's critical to actually being able to maintain this because the people who are doing the construction. Don't know where tree roots are, what they consist of, how they must be treated in order to survive the process. I think that's about it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak? Yes.
Janice Bell, I happen to live off of Second Avenue Extension. You need not to do this, people. You know, there's a little plot, a little further south. It's called Price Chopper. That's bacon and Burger King. Why don't we put this really lovely building down there? Leave the trees alone for that eleven acres? Because rumor has it, the world is heating up, it's getting really hot. And as a result, we're all cooking in the summertime. I don't know if you've noticed that. But one of the joys I've had all my life is driving down Second Avenue Extension, and I get behind Hannaford and the temperature drops. Because there's trees there. They're wonderful. And we got somebody who wants to cut them all down to fold in that apartment. No, really, Price Chopper, that's where this apartment building needs to be because that's really ugly. The eleven acres of trees is really beautiful. So please, can we beauty, ugly, do the right thing here, folks? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Hi, I'm Christian Greg Roskos. I'm a Lansingburg resident and I reside a mile and a half south of the proposed site. On Second Avenue. I also happen to be an ISA certified arborist, studied under Jack for the last ten years. So tree care is my profession. And I I look at a lot of trees in a whole variety of contexts every every working day. And I can tell you that this specific area is quite special and unique, making it far more valuable. Far more fragile and prone to even even with a protection plan, having disturbance that'll set things back. Irreversibly irreparably. So it's it's pretty much prime real estate from an ecological point of view. Which means it needs to be left alone ideally because it has certain processes already in motion that. You can't quantify, you know, they can, this project can plan out all the dollars and cents they're going to spend. You can't plan for the losses that would occur for any level of disturbance on the site. The amount of time it's taken for the majority of this forest to get to being where it is with these huge mature oaks spaced out. Like if you've seen any recently disturbed scrub forest regrowth, everything's tight together, real dark, kind of in disarray. That's far less valuable. This right here is a unique oak system. You know, the same way that we have heating and plumbing systems in our homes, this is an intact. Diverse biological pump and the amount of native species that it has compared to what I've seen in the last ten years. You can't get this this much, let's say, bang for your buck, especially being along the Hudson, especially being close enough to the city. That people might be able to enjoy it, especially from the riverside. Any any watercraft folks here would know that once you get north of the Waterford Bridge, things quiet down. I think this would drastically change the feel of that approach. So I'll be brief. The. I think there probably is space for this project, but not on this site. There's far easier to prep sites where I'm sure plenty of strings could be pulled to get you riverfront access. In a place like South Troy, in a place where there's already flatland and no forest. Especially being in a city built on this kind of innovation. That's also a strong point I want to make. If it was a special project that was touting some innovative building practices. And ecologically sensitive systems to put in place, I might consider it. But if it's going to be cookie cutter, it deserves a cookie cutter piece of land that's already flat and doesn't need to be leveled and destroyed. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, please. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, my name is Daris Silverman. I live in South Troy, so right near many of those vacant lots that that gentleman just mentioned. That put in five hundred units, a thousand, bring those people down there. We got roads for them already and there's no trees to cut down. So support for that. But I'm a farmer for fifteen years and. Since moving to Troy ten years ago, have become a specialist in urban ecology. And I am just interested to know, considering all the benefits the gentleman before me just spoke about. How the loss of this habitat will impact me living in South Troy by eliminating habitat for things like birds of prey. That help us keep our rodent populations here in the city of Troy down. I know that's important for a lot of people. And having migratory pathways on river fronts are going to be a crime way that we're able to keep many of those species here in the city. So I would just like to know if the developers have considered the impacts that eat, not just the people living right around the space, but. the people living right around the space, but the overall impact that the rest of us will experience, especially considering the number of unique species that may be on this property, as some folks before just mentioned. So thank you for your time today. I appreciate it. And I hope that you consider all of these things that impact not just this land, but all of us here in the city.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening.
Evening.
All right. Got a bit of a cold, so let me know if you can't hear me. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jessica Bennett. I live at 1009 Second Avenue. I'm right next to this site. I look out every morning and every night. We've had a beautiful full moon recently. Watching it over this land has been incredibly special. I'm really glad that you all got to do a site walk so you can see how unique this land is in all of Troy. You will never, ever have a project like this, not the apartment complex, but this site like this, ever in front of you again. I am the Bennett in Bennett v. Troy City Hall. I brought a lawsuit on behalf of the community, but I was the property owner withstanding, challenging the city of Troy, the negative declaration that was issued, as well as the zoning change. The decision ruled, and I'm going to quote here briefly, that "The city failed to take the necessary hard look at the significant environmental impact expected from the project by issuing a negative declaration." The court cited already, as the adverse environmental impact, the criteria of the positive declaration really being that there is just one significant environmental impact. That's the question in front of us right now. Is there an adverse environmental significant impact? And the court cited the archaeology, but that is not the only one. They only had to cite one in their decision. I'm concerned that this process is front-loading studies. And what I mean by that is asking for studies before the determination of significance, which is not in the spirit of Seeker. The positive declaration is to make the studies. We don't need answers. We don't need fully fleshed out arguments for a positive declaration. We need to identify what else needs to be studied. I'm concerned that this process is going down the same path as before. When the city council front-loaded the studies, instead of issuing a positive declaration, after quite literally 60 hours of public comment, many, many experts in their field, not just neighbors who didn't want this to happen, putting on the record, which was then used by the courts to justify overturning the negative declaration. There are numerous environmental impacts that have been submitted. I know certainly for this meeting, but certainly before, we've had wonderful speaker, professional arborists speaking to the need for a tree survey, preeminent bat scientists in their field submitting a bat survey, ecologists and rare species reports, which sure, may be at odds with what the developer has submitted as far as there are no rare species. But right there, perhaps we've got some conflict that might need to be studied, as well as the effects of climate change on this project, which as this project goes forward in front of the DEC, will be held up to Climate Change, the Climate Change Resilient Act. And we're not really seeing a ton of that reflected in the EAF. We don't need to have all the answers to justify a POSDEC. We just need to identify one significant environmental impact. And it's to point to one thing that we need to study. We have plenty, we have plenty of significant environmental impacts that will stand up to future litigation if necessary. And that is not my goal. I can imagine that the planning board is really in a rock and a hard place here in between potential litigation by the applicant or potential litigation by the opposition. However, the opposition already has legal victory and it clearly directs that should this project ever go forward again, the preparation of an EIS or environmental impact statement and issuance of a positive declaration is already part of the record. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Evening, everybody. Stephen Maples, Second Street. I'm going to just add one other thing to what Jess said just, just now, very wisely. I'll also just add in that, you know, just one single thing that is significant is enough to declare a POSDEC. But I'm quoting directly from the Seeker law, changes into or more elements, no one of which has a significant impact on the environment, but would consider together result in substantial adverse impact on the environment, or basically the cumulative effect. So it, we don't even actually have to find one to be significant, but just simply when you add them together, there's a, that creates significance. So I'll just point that that's in part of our deliberation, your deliberations in determining significance, that should play a role. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, my name is Rachel Carter. I'm a neighbor of the project on Second Ave. And at the last meeting, it was when you were voting on whether or not to become lead agency. The issue was raised that one of the involved parties had objected to that declaration. And on requesting that information from the planning department, the objection came from the Stockbridge Muncie. So I think it's disingenuous for the developer to say that they have their approval for this whole process because in their letter to the planning department, they very clearly stated that they have a lot of objections to the archaeology plan as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Arthur Wang. For the record, first of all, I'd like to say that it was mentioned one or two times that the planning board itself only got certain information that was, seemed quite important about four days before our meeting tonight. And as far as I'm aware, a good friend of mine, Janet A. Null, did write an email to the planning board, objecting to what she believed was a short notice of release of documents to the public and counseling the planning board to perhaps delay this particular hearing until a later date when everyone could have had enough time to fully process that information. So I would just like to point that out first. The second thing that I would like to point out is something that I believe would be quite significant to the Seeker positive declaration, which was the fact that so far our developer friends have not gotten a yes or no answer on whether or not they'll be using certain techniques for their construction and building, such as hammer drills, which I for one feel would be pretty significant as to whether or not there would be significant environmental or archaeological disturbance. And another significant factor that I myself found out was that while the developer does cite an EDP survey in 2021 regarding endangered, threatened, or just rare species in their particular area, there was a 2023 study performed that found at least one rare species of damselfly that was spotted very close to the job site, that being the southern spread wing. And I would say that too is an additional factor in favor of a positive declaration for the Seeker. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Is there anyone at home who would like to speak?
Yes.
Alec?
Thank you, yes, Alec Lindman. And I would like to reinforce the community consensus that a Seeker positive declaration is the only logical conclusion on the basis of the facts presented by the developer. For example, as we heard today, about a third of this undisturbed forested site will be paved over or built upon with impervious surfaces, and 70% of the site will be disturbed. That is, in no universe, an insignificant impact on the environmental state of the site. Furthermore, this is a straightforward logical conclusion. If there are archaeological resources, if there are mature trees and ecological systems, disturbing those can't be not disturbing them, right? Those two things are not simultaneously possible. So I think it's very clear that a positive Seeker declaration is the only defensible choice in this situation. And finally, I would also like to highlight some inconsistencies in the copious hundreds of pages of materials that developers submitted, which I completely agree are in part an effort to dissuade substantive comment by overloading the public with documents. I draw your attention to page A 4.2 of the progress set, aerial view from Waterford Historic District. This shows the buildings in situ on the site, surrounded by a cordon of trees. Those trees in the rendering are not the trees that are physically present on the site as you saw during your site walkthrough. And in fact, there are two significant reasons why the trees included in the rendering are misleading. The first is that they have low-down foliage that is portrayed as solid and visually impenetrable. As you saw, that oak grove along the waterfront has a very high upper story and clear understory through which sightlines to the building footprint are open. Secondly, the trees are shown in the rendering with leaves on them. The trees on the site are not evergreen and therefore, at the time the photograph was taken, as shown by all of the other trees, there shouldn't be any leaves on those trees in the renderings, therefore making the visual impact of the development much more substantial than is presently captured in the rendering by the developer. Therefore, something at least erroneous, potentially misleading. So in summary, I request that you issue a positive declaration and proceed from that point with the required studies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at home who would like to speak? Okay. All right, so I think we'll give the applicant an opportunity to respond to any of those things that you want to, if you want to.
I don't think we need to respond to anything other than, I, there was a comment about a late submittal. I think that was referring to the sewer study. We haven't, it's been weeks since we submitted anything, but other than that.
No, I think what some of the staff or some of the members here said that they have only seen it for four days or something, but that has nothing to do with its availability. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. All right, so thank you, folks, for your interest in this. And we'll go on to the next item on the agenda. PLPC 2025 0002, 604 Seventh Avenue, Lansing Fields.
Good evening to the board.
Rick's gone now.
Just give me one second. I'm going to pull some stuff up. I believe counsel stepped up.
So you're here for a public hearing and for a secret determination?
Yeah, I believe we are doing public hearing, Seeker, and potential subdivision approval.
Am I allowed to share my screen, Angie? Angie?
Am I allowed to share my screen? Oh, I think I got it.
Well, yeah.
I got it. Should I wait for counsel?
Yes.
Yes.
It wasn't public.
Chris, will we wait for Rick?
Yeah.
Is he, did he indicate he's coming back or?
Yeah, yeah. He went to print out that thing for the last applicant. But I think.
We can go ahead.
They can progress with the presentation. Yeah. I'm pretty familiar with this project, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you. All right, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Joseph Pernichero. I'm here with the applicant. I'm joined, I believe still, by Zoom by Elizabeth Young JoJo.
Yes, I'm here.
We work for River Development Partners. Our office is down the street. We are here tonight for 604 Seventh Ave, which is the old Catholic football field. You may recall, I was before this board, I think, once or twice before. It's been quite a few months. We had to work with the zoning board, and I'll recap all of that in my presentation. But I think we've finally come to a point where I'm ready to be back before you all tonight. Just to bring you back up to speed and refresh you, this is the old Catholic Central High School field that we're talking about, right there on Seventh Ave in Lansingburg. A quick description of the zoning in the neighborhood. What we are proposing is a subdivision of the five and a half acre lot into 14 lots, which would then be for future development of 12 single-family townhouses along Seventh Ave. As I mentioned, this is the old football field. We completed the redevelopment of the school and the gym earlier this year, end of last year, into 98 apartments. I'm also happy to report, not related to this project, that we are almost fully leased there. I think we have two left, so we're very pleased with how that project turned out. Most of the field will remain as one parcel untouched, and the new parking lot will remain part of the gym parcel. I'll show you all that in a second. And then we obtained the necessary zoning variances that we are required at the March 7th ZBA meeting in order to complete the subdivision as shown. So I believe you have this, my markup is the colors and the red lines to help visualize it. All of the white up top, that is the existing gym and parking lot. That all remains one large parcel that's already completed. That includes the back there, the wooded section. The large green parcel, that is the rest of the football field, that also stays one parcel with frontage on 115th. After several meetings with the ZBA and public comment, we added an alley in the back that'll be dedicated to the city eventually. This is for a couple of things. After public comment, it's for trash pickup, emergency vehicles. The city of Troy Fire Department provided us with their turn radius, which our engineer then, that's why that big turnaround there at the end, so fire trucks can turn around.
And that's where the trash is going to be also?
Correct. So trash pickup will be in the rear as well. We didn't want trash pickup in the front along Seventh Ave, yep.
But it'd be, will it be in that turnaround area or each lot will have its own trash?
Each lot will just sit there, just like they do in the rest of the city, set the trash out by the alley, truck will pick it up.
So we'll have the city trash.
City trash, yep. And then the 12 new homes there along Seventh Ave.
So is all your parking on the street?
That's correct, yep. Yeah, we, you may remember, we originally had driveways in front. Public comment and ZBA asked to take those out because it's not really required for single-family homes here. You're allowed to use street parking. So that's kind of where we landed.
How wide are those lots, the residential lots?
They vary between about 25 feet and 40 feet.
Minimum of 25.
Yep. It may be 23, I'm sorry, some of the smaller ones may be 23. I don't have, I could pull that up. And I should note also, the lots are big enough where down the road, the future owner of these homes or lots could apply for their own permits to put a parking off the alley in the back, kind of like other Lansingburg homes have, you know, small parking area on their own lot.
And how many stories are the homes?
Two. All the future homes are two stories. They are three-bed, one and a half bath.
And not likely to become two-family homes like every place else?
No, I don't think you could do that with our layout. All the bedrooms are upstairs and yeah, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that is it. A couple zoning updates, as I've mentioned. We had three meetings with the ZBA, back and forth on the size of the lots, the alleys. We work with city engineer, I'd say, pretty well by now, along with DPU and the fire department. On the alley grading, stormwater. On the alley grading, stormwater and sanitary, which some of those items are still unresolved, but I think we have a good path forward. That's why we're here tonight. At this time, we're only seeking approval of the subdivision. All the single family homes, the plans for those will have to be submitted. Building Department, they reviewed then. A couple of photos for you. Top left is the field looking from the north and then the bottom right is just along Seventh Ave, looking back towards the woods. Top left is from the south, looking back towards the gym. And then the bottom right is a similar photo. Happy to answer any questions. You know, these homes will be, you know, I think a good addition for the neighborhood down the road. Once we are ready to build them, it'll be for single family, first time homeowners, owner occupied. That is the target here.
Questions for the applicant?
Explain to us what a MOU is.
It's a memorandum of understanding. It's basically a letter that we sign that says, we understand we can't do X before Y happens. Correct. Yeah, we. Go ahead, Angie.
Do it with the sewer. Have any idea what we need to do is, are you guys have issues down there?
So we haven't. And Chris can speak to this probably more than I can.
Could you see if your mic's on?
Nope.
Test. Can you hear me back there?
They can hear you.
We good?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to that. So they submitted their sewer flow and storm water information. We had it reviewed by a third party. It looks as things are laid out now, there would be an increase to the combined sewer overflow, which is not allowed anywhere within the city. So the standard procedure here is we work with the developer, so they either essentially end up doing what we call an offset project, where they decrease the amount of storm water going to the combined sewer so that their increase in sanitary no longer causes combined sewer overflow. Now, this offset project could likely be within the city right away. That's a separate project. They got in a city street essentially, unless the applicant finds a way to utilize their other properties to alleviate the required amount of storm water.
There's storm work.
So this is sort of a moving target as we work out this offset project with the applicant.
Nothing happens until that's settled.
Correct.
You're agreeable with the MOU?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. Yeah, the goal is to kind of deal with Chris and work with him on that. But really just kind of hopefully check this box on the subdivision and keep that process moving forward. That's our goal.
Great, thank you. More than questions?
One question, Chara. Is the turnaround on the alley fire department compliant?
Yes. Yep, they're the ones who supplied us with the turnaround radius and we gave that to our civil engineer and he spit this, we'll cut this back out.
They'll probably want to look at it on the, on the drawing, the fire department.
Correct. And when we submit our building permit application, I believe the fire department reviews that. Also, there was a condition to our zoning variances that the fire department had to sign off on final construction of the alleyway. So that's already kind of baked into that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any else? So we open that up for a public hearing. Thank you. And is there anyone here to comment on this application? Yes, come on forward, please.
No, no.
I think you said no.
No, okay. Is anybody at home who wants to comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to further board discussion. So before us, I think would be a secret determination and then subdivision approval. Is there a secret motion?
I would make a motion that the secret destination be negative.
Negative deck?
Yeah, negative deck.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item to consider is approval of the subdivision application. I think staff is recommending it be contingent upon the MOU, so we can include that in the motion if someone wants to make that motion.
Right. I think that we'd like to offer a subdivision approval contingent on the signing of an MOU with the offset increase in combined sewer overflow volume resulting from this project.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye bye.
The next item is PLPC twenty twenty four zero zero one nine Eddie's Lane Residential Development. Is applicant present? Anyone to speak on this project? Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this application?
No, it's here. No, they're not here.
So do we?
Table it. Motion to table it.
I'd like to move the table twenty twenty four zero zero one nine.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item is PLPB twenty twenty five zero zero four nine three oh two Tenth Street. The applicant here? Hey. Identify yourself for the record, please.
My name's Adam Batella. I'm the architect for the project.
Thank you, Adam.
Not sure what kind of digital assets are going to be made available. Are there any?
Angie, do you want to pull anything up to show on this project? We have anything available? It's hard to do in a very Why don't you? Why don't you give an overview of what's going on and then we can?
Every other meeting that has been provided, so. So three oh two Tenth Street is the, it's kind of the two buildings across the street from the the newish Stewarts on Husick Street, the corner of Husick Street and Tenth Street. It is, I guess nominally two buildings, but it's connected by kind of a sky bridge, so it's considered as one building. The building at the north of the site is a seven thousand square foot currently CO'd as an event space and the building at the south of the space, excuse me, at the site is a unoccupied firehouse. It's about five thousand square feet. Our application is only being considered for the seven thousand square foot current event space, but it's not going to be used as an event space anymore. The applicant's proposing to open a coworking space intended to cater to people with small children and their family, so to provide a space for people to co-work while also providing opportunity for children to be able to kind of like hang and play out in a moderately supervised situation. It's explicitly not a daycare. There's no drop off of children to be monitored by daycare staff or anything like that. It would be families coming there to be able to use a coworking space, but also there's a place where they can monitor their kids while they're working at the same time. We, architecturally, there's basically no work to be done on the inside. The space is in great condition. It's fully sprinkled. It's super clean. There's a number of kind of office areas already available. It would mostly be furniture arrangement. There's no construction planned. There's no need for an increase in bathrooms or anything like that in terms of code compliance. And again, it is fully sprinkled. Site modifications that we're proposing include, I think, the biggest, I think maybe talking point or one of the talking points would be there's kind of a through route from Husick Street through the site to Tenth Street. And currently that ends up being used during kind of high periods of traffic. People cut through the site. And we, we see that as potentially a harmful kind of condition, especially if children are going to be onsite and families and things like that. So you can kind of see it. And you can see it in the site plan too, if you pull up the first sheet. Yeah, it's right here down on the bottom right corner where there's vehicle access. So that is Oakwood Terrace. It's kind of like an alley situation. The paving of the alley kind of bleeds into the, into the parcel, which we can look at in the photos in a second. But you can see in the bottom, in the middle where we've got raised curb, we would be proposing to eliminate the curb cut that's there. Repair the sidewalk and extend the existing fence that currently exists kind of at the corner of Oakwood Terrace and runs like east, west towards the firehouse. Closing the curb would also allow us to provide a few more parking spaces on site. It's certainly a challenging site in terms of parking. We're proposing fourteen spaces with one ADA space. As well as a new dumpster location at the northwest corner of the site. You can see it up there. There's kind of like a, kind of a grassy hill area. The other curb cuts would remain. There's one in front of the firehouse. It's not really usable unless you're a fire shock from like the nineteen twenties, I suppose. The other vehicle access, the main access for the site would be at the northwest corner as well as there is access via Oakwood Terrace that spills out onto Husick Street at the southeast corner as well. There's currently, I think, kind of unofficial non-stripe parking along Oakwood Terrace. Given the kind of raised entrances around what we're proposing to be the shared workspace, we would propose to put the ADA space up there. So there'd be no need to kind of deal with stairways or ramps if you were, if you needed accessibility. I think that's the project in a nutshell. There's very, very minor site improvements or rather site work to be done. There's no real changes other than the curb cut and adding striped parking spaces.
I just have one comment. I know you have your garbage dumpster on Tenth Street. I think I would prefer it in the back.
Yeah, I think.
It's not seen. I mean, you can't do that. There seems to be grass between your docket line and the building. It couldn't go in there, kind of?
Yeah, I, we're certainly amenable to putting the dumpster in a more preferred location. There's the, the lower floor of the space is essentially like an old, this was like a butcher block company. So it's kind of like an old factory space. So a lot of the what's called building amenities kind of, kind of direct themselves towards that side of the building, which is why we located the dumpster there. But I don't think we anticipate generating so much trash that we're like using a forklift to, to bring trash around. So we could probably bring it up to the upstairs.
Be kind of unsightly to be it on Tenth Street when you can have it in the back of the building at the very north end.
Yeah, there's a significant grade change between the, the up, the northeastern corner and the south, southern, southwestern corner of the site. Maybe if we could go over one to the next sheet.
Firehouse is vacant now?
Firehouse is vacant. There's no plan to use that as part of this project. There's multiple locked doors between the two.
Any plans to use it for anything?
I'm not the building owner. I don't believe at this point there are plans to use it. Certainly this tenant does not plan to extend their, their kind of stay into that building. Can we go to the next, to the photo of the, the sheet of the photos? So you can see right here. There's about a one-story grade change between the kind of diagonal parking, let's call it, and the lower area. So that'd be the only reason to potentially consider trash in one location or the other, just kind of bringing it from where it is in the building up to where it needs to go. But again, I don't think we're generating that much trash. That's going to really be an issue. So we're happy to locate the dumpster up there.
Yeah, I even thought that maybe you could put it between the fence and the, in the building and on the grass, you know.
Oh, all the way in the back. Yeah. So again, the grade change
So.
makes it challenging. We, there were some discrepancies. I think you'll see in the staff comments. We've since revised the site plan and I've provided additional photos as well that I don't, I think were submitted too late to get, to get your attention for this meeting. But additional photos can, we're happy to provide them so you can kind of fully understand the significant grade change.
I don't know if you said this, I, I didn't hear some of the things you said. Did you, how many work units are going to be in this project?
So they, there's an anticipation of, the idea is that the, the business would be open about eight o'clock to six o'clock. So you can kind of get a full day's work in if you so choose, chose. But ideally, they're trying to motivate people to work there and leave before four o'clock, before Husick Street gets like super busy. And they anticipate in one day, there would be between ten and maybe seventeen families there. Not necessarily at one time, but throughout the course of the entire day. So that would be maybe two to three people per family. So.
Well, I'm, it's going to be workspace, right?
Yes.
It's a coworking space, yeah.
Do they have assigned workspace or just common workspace?
I'm not fully sure of the business model. But answers are coming.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Lydia. It'll be common workspace.
Can you identify yourself?
Lydia Zembrano, my data.
Common workspace, so whoever gets there first gets the best desk. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and how many people do you, how do you control how many people are there at a time? Do you limit the number of people that you contract with or what?
Yes.
And how many do you plan to contract with?
Well, we're hoping maybe like ten to like fifteen.
Ten or?
Fifteen people at a time.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Sorry, ten or fifteen people at a time.
Ten or fifteen?
Maximum.
So the, so the, the building itself would have an approximate occupant load of forty six to forty seven people based on strict, just building code math at this moment. I think that would actually go lower when an actual calculation was done based on the interior environment. But again, they, so that would be like legally code compliant maximum number of people. But they anticipate a member based kind of system. So it's not, it's not a walk in off the street and just go use the space. You'd have to be a paying member to be a participant.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking about it in terms of parking. So how many parking spaces you have? Fourteen?
So we're proposing fourteen.
So and you have ten to fifteen occupants, but you don't think they're all be there at the same time, but they could be. Right? And and is there going to be exterior play area or this all going to be interior play area?
The idea is that the, the first floor is, is very wide open. Again, it was kind of a manufacturing, excuse me.
So they won't be playing outside?
The idea is there's no play areas outside.
Okay. So and then you said there was supervised play. So who, who's providing the supervision?
The adult members of the families.
So they're working and they're on one floor and supervising the children on the other floor?
I, I'd say the majority of the coworking is on the, the same floor as the child, what's called childcare area where like where the children would be playing. So it'd be very similar to coworking at your own home. It just provides kind of a better, more social environment for children to be able to play with other children.
Understand. How many stories is this? Just two?
It's a two-story building. The majority of the coworking would be on the lower floor and there'd be kind of administrative and maybe private breakout rooms on the upper floor.
I'm sorry. Say that what's on the upper floor?
The lower floor would be the primary coworking kind of common area and the upper floor would be kind of administrative areas for like maybe Lydia and a staff member or two or something like that, as well as private like breakout rooms or a private meeting room if you needed that as part of your coworking.
Thirty five hundred square feet up there?
The entire building, seven thousand? Yeah. So I'd say it's about split fifty fifty.
Yes, there, there's no other plans for that second floor except for an office space? That doesn't make sense.
Right. Also, before we address that, the second floor is not the entire footprint of the building. There's a, I'd say at least one third, if not half, is actually kind of open, open mezzanine to below. So it's not fully thirty five hundred square feet on the top.
Meaning it's two stories on?
Right. There's kind of a double height space in the majority of the, the building. What was your?
In this new building is, was built that way?
I think that it was originally built as potentially a two-story building, but it was since modified. Again, there was like heavy manufacturing happening there. There's kind of an excessive amount of electricity. And I think it was like gantry, gantry cranes and things like that happening. So I think it was modified to be two stories. Or excuse me, to be a double height space.
Well, how many people are going to be in the second floor space, the administrative space and the, what did you say, meeting space, event space?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's hard to put a, a defined Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's hard to put a, uh, a defined number on there. I don't think, I think the idea is not that you would go and work on the second floor for the entire entirety of your stay there. I think it would be, you need a, a place for a private meeting or to do a Zoom call or a phone call or something and you would go up there, do what you need to do and then return back to your kind of common area.
And get, get your friend to watch the kids while you're up on the second floor. And what about, uh?
I mean, it's no different from like a playground, right?
In the administrative, uh, function, that's going to be one person or?
We're planning on having two people on staff.
Have you done?
17 people at least.
Yeah, I mean, uh.
14 spaces.
Yeah, but some of their families are probably coming in one car. Right.
Yeah, we anticipate, uh, the, part of the idea is to cater to kind of the community on that side, let's say of Husick Street. So we're anticipating walk-in traffic as well.
Okay.
As well as a, um, a relationship with the Oakwood Community Center where people who are members of that would be able to, um, use the space as well. So they would potentially be parked and kind of how, not housed, but parked and like kind of, um, established over at the Oakwood Community Center and they would walk from there to here.
Yeah.
Adam, uh, the closure of the Husick Street entrance, what's the status of your communications with DOT right now on that?
No communication.
Okay, thank you.
I was, I mean, to be honest, uh, in my experience, closing a curb cut, uh, I did not realize required communication with the DOT as opposed to creating a new one. So we'll, we'll open up that line of communication. But I think we're also hesitant to get going on that too much before we had any sort of, um, understanding about if that would be something you guys are amenable to, to begin with, so.
Have, have you determined that it does require DOT approval?
Uh, in the staff comments, that was a, that was a comment. I don't know that we received any official communication from either the city or the state, but we're happy to pursue it.
I mean, the work itself will certainly require a highway work permit. You know, because they'll be on Husick Street just, just to do the work.
Understand, but if you did nothing except put a fence across the entrance. I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to eliminate the curb cut, but you could leave the curb cut and block the entrance, right? Without DOT approval or, I don't know. I'm just wondering.
I, I don't know the answer to that. If you did a temporary closure, yeah, if that would require or not, not, not sure. They, and yeah, I mean, it's reasonable to expect they might not have an issue with the, with the closure. You know, at least be more amenable to it than an opening.
But the city might want a curb there.
Our, our question more pertains is if they do close it, how does that affect now only using the other entrance on, um, was it 10th, 10th Street?
So there's also one on Oakwood Terrace. It's like a, it's kind of a ramp situation that goes down from Oakwood Terrace. So there's still two access points to the site. Um, just one is not directly off of Husick Street. So you technically go on Oakwood and then into the site.
I think the staff, one of the staff indicated they're concerned that whether there's there're currently three then, and there will only be two, where you're still going to increase the volume using that exit on 10th Street, probably unless they all decide to use the other exit. And it's very close to Husick Street. So it's, I think there's a requirement to, to, to be away from the, uh, an intersection, right? For generally speaking, or you don't like, at least we don't want to increase the traffic that close to the intersection. The in, exit and entrance.
Right. So I, I, I think that the current curb cut directly off of Husick Street is close enough to the access from Oakwood Terrace that effectively it's, it's one entrance or one, one exit, excuse me, entrance and exit to the site. Um, at least that's kind of my opinion, right? They're, they're like eight feet away from each other. It's not, it's not like we're closing one in the middle of the site and one on, uh, you know, completely opposite side.
Um, I'm just curious. Do you have, uh, I've never heard of someone starting this type of business. Is there a big demand out there for that or?
I think Troy needs it and I feel like it would be nice to have. There's a lot of, um, coworking areas in Troy, but nothing that involves children and it's a demand that I personally felt like was needed here. Um, there's a lot of children in Troy, a lot of families that could use this space.
Right. And they would be paying rent to you or paying a fee for them to use it on a weekly basis, monthly basis, daily basis? How does that work?
Um, we're thinking of monthly. We haven't fully determined all those details yet, but we're thinking monthly.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Just one question.
Yes.
Corp counsel. I think I heard correctly, but if I didn't, please correct me. Uh, did you say that you are discontinuing the, uh, use of the facility as an event space?
Yeah, I think any mention of events on our application, if there are any.
I, I think it, it was, it was still in the application. That's why I'm asking.
So any, we don't anticipate, there is no plan for public, open public events to take place in this place. If there are, let's call them events, it would be workshops based on membership. So member, member workshops, not open, open public forums or things like that to be here. So no, uh, underground raves, if that's what we're getting at.
So no what?
Underground raves, if that's what we're getting at here.
Yeah, that didn't, that didn't work out so well.
Right. Right.
Not 90s anymore.
No, they did. They tried to.
Like recent, recent events might have, yeah. So you can see there, uh, so it's, yeah, right.
That's got to be a tough curb cut to get in and out of there anyway, right?
So we're also, again, this was previously used for kind of like light manufacturing and deliveries and things like that. This would be residential vehicles, not, um, yes, there might be a dumpster truck or a snowplow and things like that, but it's not, it's not box trucks and, um, delivery trucks and things like that that would be using that. Uh, and there's plenty of space if there was the need for delivery or something on Oakwood Terrace is a, is based, I think it might be a dead end, but basically it's, it's, uh, totally usable for someone to stage a truck if they had to make deliveries.
Okay, other questions?
I have one more. Yes, go ahead. Corp counsel.
How were you planning on, um, closing that curb cut? So the idea, the idea now would be to extend the fence and we could also extend, uh, you know, we could, we could put in a proper curb and pave as necessary up against it as well as, um, a fence. And I think some bollards probably would be good to have on our side of the fence to keep people from accidentally driving into Husick Street. Uh, we could also, uh, extend some landscaping if necessary, but I'm not, uh, you know, I, I think that the fence would be adequate, but that would be the idea. Just want to know.
Anything further?
This is a good representation of the, the grade change between the, the two parking areas there.
So what is that? Is that a retaining wall on that hill or what is, what?
Yeah, it's an existing retaining wall.
And then there's, but right behind your building, it goes down to grade. You're, the, you have space that's at grade between your building and that road, that alley? Or does it slope up there is what I'm asking?
Uh, so.
I know it slopes from Husick up, but I'm asking from. Yeah. Yeah, that's, but that, that wall is not connected to your building. Is, is there space between that wall?
Oh, uh, no, there's no space. So the, the, the building and the wall kind of meet together.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Let's see if there, any public, member of the public wants to speak on this. You can have a seat. Is there anyone here to speak on this application? Is there anyone at home would like to speak? This comes through the public hearing?
Excuse me?
It's constituted a public hearing?
No, no, it's the first meeting. So. You can,
Can we do?
You can find it to be a type two seeker action. Yes.
Can we declare, uh?
And you can declare the application complete if you believe it is.
So is there a secret motion?
I'd like to make a motion to confirm that this is a type two, uh, seeker application.
On second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. The motion carries unanimously. Uh, so then we can, uh, consider a motion to declare the application complete. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to declare the application complete.
Second?
I second.
Motion made and seconded to declare the application complete. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Uh, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
So we declared the application complete.
Public hearing.
Sadly, a public hearing, but they're, are there, are there zoning variances that are required?
No. No, no.
I didn't think so. Okay.
Washington two.
You say you, schedule, you can schedule a public hearing.
On the date, the next available date? Next meeting?
What do you think, Rick?
I would just put it out for the next available, assuming the applicant doesn't object.
You be ready for the next meeting?
We would love to be on the next meeting. I think, uh, yes, we'd like to be ready for the next meeting. So, or we'd like to be on the agenda. I don't know what the DOT situation is, but.
If, yeah, if not, if they're not ready, they could request an extension.
All right.
Well, I would say we'll be ready. I just don't know, uh, what the DOT kind of, there will be consensus from the DOT, but perhaps at the next meeting, if there's no consensus from the DOT, there could be approvals with contingencies in place or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we'll schedule it and if we have to extend it, we can extend it.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not explicitly saying that we would need a permit from the DOT in order for, to recommend that they grant site plan approval because it's something in the public right away and.
Right.
So.
I just know we'll be ready for the next meeting. So we'd be happy to be on the agenda.
21st.
21st. So October 21st is the next PP.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, schedule a public hearing on October 21st.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. And the motion carries unanimously. Any other business come before the planning board? Now we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second that.
Favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Jim, you're good at that motion.
That might be the earliest we've, uh, finished.